Okay, let's get started. Just missing one recipe. Just not answering the phone. Welcome. Tonight we're going over the study by Tectonic on the upper dam rehabilitation project. So I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to introduce yourself to the camera and if you wanna talk a little bit about the whole process, where we're at, and we can go through this. I guess that would be the plan?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Sounds terrific. Good evening, Mark Lukasek, Tectonic Engineering. We prepared the study under the most recent contract for the village, for the upper dam, as you alluded to. The reason we are here is essentially in 2009, the state modified the rules regarding dam safety in the state of New York, mandated a new process which basically took dam owners throughout the state on a new path where an engineering assessment needed to be done for all dams in the state that were either high hazard or intermediate hazard. That assessment process was an engineering look, a stress test, a checkup, if you will, on the condition of a dam. And then out of that process came recommendations. And those studies were done in approximately 2010 or 11, if my memory serves me correctly. And one of the things that came out of that report was, and more detailed look needed to happen at the upper dam. And there are other dams within the system as well, but this is the first one that the village has chosen to tackle and take a good hard look at so that you can work your way toward compliance with the dam safety regulations. You have a strong, solid piece of, a key piece of your water infrastructure up in the reservoir system, and it's good for the future. And that's, that roadmap, that narrowing of where you need to go in the future is what this report basically outlined. It gives you a sense of what's needed, what we think the appropriate manner to proceed is, and allows you to then begin planning for the next steps, which is finance plan, permit, design, and then ultimately construct at that location. So, what you have in front of you, and we have extra copies distributed as well, is a, let's see, probably ten, twelve page outline, really high level highlights from the report. I think it's pretty easy to digest and try to keep it nice and straightforward, to the point. Probably take fifteen minutes to go through it in general. I'm really open to whichever way you wanna work, we can just have a conversation as we go through it. Something pops to mind, you wanna ask a question, go ahead. Or I can just kind of cruise right through it and say until again. Regardless, here to answer any questions that you have on it, clarify anything that's there. If you wanna go to something that you read in the report that we didn't highlight here, happy to do that too.
Right.
So, with that-
I'd like to just, I guess the best thing is to ask questions as we go along while they're fresh and on the topic.
Really fine, absolutely fine. So, the first thing that we did with this, on the dam, was to go out and just take the pulse of where it stood today. We hadn't looked at the dam itself in a number of years, although the village has continued to look at it and drew up with consultants, has continued to inspect the dam, so that's fine. We were able to review a number of pieces of record information as well, some monitoring that's going on in the facility. So a lot of that, you know, new, we'll call it an inspection, a visual inspection, was done on the dam, just to get familiar with where it stood in 2016. What we did find, and we hadn't been able to see before, but really was a lot of coordination with the water department, was to get the water level down in the upper reservoir. And that exposed a lot of the structure that had not been regularly seen. The only time you really would see that is if you hit a drought, a severe drought condition. You don't tend to operate those levels. So that allowed us to see a lot of the upstream face, a lot of the lower reaches of the intake tower. And actually in coordination with the preparation for lowering the upper reservoir, we actually had to see the toe of the dam as well, with some preparatory lowering on the lower side of the dam. So, we've got a good, a good opportunity to observe the in place condition of that dam.
Can you identify what the toe is?
Sure.
I know it's referenced throughout the report.
Okay. What we're using, the language that we're using here, we're gonna have the upstream face, which upstream face means upper reservoir, means the-
Inside the dam.
Yep. The top reservoir side. The toe is the bottom of the front side of the dam. So if you're standing down in the lower reservoir area looking at the upper dam, that area just at the water line that you can see, lower reservoir water surface is the toe of the upper dam.
And there are frequent references to the crest?
Mm-hmm.
The crest is measured how?
That is the concrete top of the-
So the crest is measured at approximately six hundred and twenty-five feet or six hundred and fifty feet. So what is the measurement from the toe to the crest, or what?
For argument's sake, we're talking about a twenty-foot-high structure.
Yes, understand. And that's repeated multiple times. But also multiple times there's a reference to six hundred and fifty feet. And I'm just trying to figure out where, where the measurement is to get to six hundred and fifty feet.
For argument's sake, sea level is zero.
Okay, so it's elevation-
So the elevation of the root, yeah.
It's elevation, not measured distance from point X to point Y.
Correct, correct.
That'd be like Hoover Dam.
Yeah. One thing to keep in mind here is that any solution that you're working toward here, you want it to last a good long while. Any money that you expend, you know, you're going to want that solution to persist and be valid for a great period of time. Dams are-
So if I, if I look at, the current dam is a hundred years old.
Right.
And the, the initial implementation of it is two hundred years old. So I'm surprised to see a fifty-year life. I would've expected to see a longer life expectancy. Reminded me of the Tappan Zee Bridge.
So let's discuss, let's discuss that point. You're right. You know, when, when the dam was first put forth in one configuration, it was based on, you know, one performance standard. Somebody wanted to hold back some water for a specific purpose. And over time, as the drinking water supply became part of the element and you wanted to expand the use, you know, somebody looks back and says, okay, now I want more water, which means more height or a different spillway capacity, et cetera. So what is generally considered for dams, fifty years is a number that's not expected to fall down in year fifty-one. But what might be the case is what has happened now is the mathematics behind it, the assumptions that are made are how it would perform, how it would stand up, how it would retain water, how it would pass too much water. All those elements, all those assumptions, all the science behind the numbers that are plugged into the mathematics that designed these facilities, they change. Just if you look at what's happening across New York State now, generally, a lot of the dams that were built throughout the nineteen hundreds were done using rainfall statistics, which pretty much tapped out around nineteen forty. Now, the state of New York and throughout the northeast region are using mathematics that extended that series of data into the two thousands. And they polished, honed that numbers, and they stopped looking at data around two thousand and eight. But adding that nineteen forty to post-two thousand, to the rainfall, basically says, okay, we used to think such and such an event warranted nine inches of rain in this area. Now we think it might be ten inches of rain, for example, just on more data, more math. And so as a result, the numbers that we would use for sizing this dam's ability to pass water and rainstorms, we're gonna be moving more water than the designers would've done, say, done this in nineteen fifty, or for this case, a foundered dam and the configuration look at today.
What would it take to make it a one-hundred-year life?
It would take some guesswork, and it would take a number of extra assumptions, some extra accommodations in there. They might be appropriate guesses, they might not. The scenario, if we just look at, one of the, one of the major elements that drives modifications and design elements of dams is, is water and rainfall. And as more water needs to pass over that dam, the water level will rise higher as it's doing that. And that can lead to other things, like trying to flip a dam over or otherwise destabilize that structure. So it all really leads back to rainfall. So if we're to take it a guess and say, okay, the scientist guessed, you know, worked through the mathematical numbers and came up with a ten inches of rainfall, so for a hundred year, let's pick eleven, and it turns out that, you know, fifty years from now, they've run through more statistics and now it's eleven and a half, you know, did you, was that a good choice to have made that excess assumption? I don't know. It's, it's a future we can't forget. But what we can do is work with the generally accepted practice, we can work with those fifty years. You can feel comfortable that you're making a decision based on a very reasonable and pragmatic and responsible timeframe for whatever it is that needs to be accomplished at this facility.
So with the data that you have on rainfall, is that something that's gradually gotten higher, or is it just fluctuating?
No.
Is there actually evidence that-
It's, it's the fact that the numbers, the data series, the length of time, the amount of data that they have is just greater. You know, if you, if you look at the past week and say, well, let me try to predict the future of how much it rains, you'd say it never rained, it was zero. Go to two weeks and now you say, okay, well, maybe now we got a quarter of an inch. So if you look at over a hundred and fifty years, you get a much better estimate of how often it rains, how much. And from there, you have a better guide for site and design. So with that in mind, what we find when we run the mathematics on the dam today is you have about thirty percent of the capacity in your spillways now that you ought to under the two thousand and nine guidance, but powered by the state. So obviously, that's a number that we'd like to get to a hundred percent of the required capacity, such that you would be considered to be compliant with-
Thanks, put forth by the state. How you doing? Good evening, Mark Lukasek, Tectonic. Steve Bilotto.
Hello.
Thanks.
SDF is what?
Design Flood.
And that's the service spillway. That's the one that's on the west abutment over toward the Segal property, like that we're talking about. That's the, the shorter first one, that's, that's the main. They talk about service spillway and auxiliary. The service is the one where it's typically supposed to come through when the, when the reservoir's full, it's gonna hit that one with its overtopping that, and it needs to get to the auxiliary spillway. So what he's talking about here first is the service spillway, correct?
Exactly right. So at your dam, as Greg just quite nicely summarized, you have two spillways. And that service spillway, as the name implies, is supposed to be designed to be activated regularly. That's where you want your flow to go, that's where you expect your flow to go, and it is much more robust. It expects to receive the flow and take the energy and the roso forces of water at that particular location. The auxiliary is there as like a safety valve. So that can go as needed and is meant to basically move high volumes of flow such that as storms are getting worse, hurricane-type condition is pretty common, as the, you know, the design severe scenario for this part of the country. That auxiliary spillway is meant to move that ever increasing flow better and quickly through the-
If I remember, the auxiliary spillway, which is the second option, is higher than the regular spillway, is that correct? So here's my, my intellectual, won't the water still come over the regular spillway? And what, would it take for the auxiliary spillway to become used by the water? Just logically, the water's gonna come over the low, continues to-
But if it's coming in faster, coming down faster, and that capacity is, it still builds up and it gets to the next level where it comes over.
So-
Which is still lower than the crest, so it doesn't overtop the whole thing. You're controlling, you want it to be here, if it's not, all gonna fit here, then it's gonna go to here.
So, if I remember correctly, there's about a one-foot difference between the auxiliary, the recommended auxiliary and the regular spillway? So you've got about a foot of water going over the, I mean, that's huge amounts of water going over the regular spillway before it gets to the auxiliary spillway?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's exactly what's happening.
Certainly not, then, I mean, at that point, you're in an extreme emergency when you're gonna see that happen.
Okay.
Well, we've seen that happen.
Well, because right now, if you were to go up there, the existing one is only about fifteen, twenty feet wide where the service spillway is right now, whereby where the Segal property is. So it's frequently more than that's gonna handle, so it hits the auxiliary on a more regular basis, right?
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, and, and your instinct is correct. I mean, the three feet of quickly flowing water is tremendously powerful, which is what you can essentially achieve before water starts going over the top of the dam, in that area. So we, I mean, you would never do it. Instinctively, you would shy away from it, but if you attempted to walk through that, you'd go over it. There's no way to resist that.
That's incorrect.
No, he wouldn't do it either. You know, he's, it's much too risky. And similarly, the auxiliary spillway is a large facility here. Now it's a hundred and twenty-five feet wide. That can also flow quite deep. So you get the sense that if, you know, that small spillway, you know, you can say, wow, that's really gonna convey some order. Just imagine what can go across a hundred and twenty-five feet, if you have a location. So you have them in this capacity, and yet, you're looking at this and saying, oh my goodness, but I still need another seventy percent more. And the reason behind that is really on the, how big is the storm that you're being asked to move from your upper reservoir to your lower reservoir?
So, when is the last time a storm of that magnitude hit our area?
Let me hold that for one second and just explain what the storm is that you're being asked to achieve, and then we can touch on that.
Okay.
The, the size of the storm is, that the dam needs to pass, is basically selected by considering what's downstream of that dam. And in your particular case, there is a potential for loss of life if the dam were to rapidly fail, which means your dam is high hazard. So as a result, the state would like you to design this dam to be very robust, such that that eventuality is minimized even if it's a very large storm. So hydrologically, we use something called a probable maximum precipitation, which is another statistical model, which is basically the end of the world. It would be a monstrous storm that statistically has not occurred in this area, but it mathematically could be achievable, again, over a record of time and done by a bunch of mathematicians. So that probable maximum, as it sounds like, is something that somebody says, well, might occur. In the rehabilitation in the state of New York, we designed for half of that. And even that is an extremely large event out here. You are talking about something precipitation-wise is in the range of fifteen inches over the span of twenty-four hours. It spans seventy-two hours, forgive me. So that is a direct hit from a major hurricane, doing something analogous to what happened in Houston in the news early this year, where it stalls out and it, and it's just repeatedly pounding your area for multiple days. That's the type of event that the state considers appropriate for a dam of this nature.
You said nineteen, nineteen inches of rain over three days?
About fifteen.
Fifteen?
Inches of rain over three days. The maximum precipitation in this area is about thirty inches, so half that is fifteen.
How much do we get sandy? Do you have any idea?
Sandy was really a rain event. It was tropical storm Lee and Irene where we had the rain.
Irene, that's the one.
That's the one that we really would be talking about, started rainfall. And that was, I think it was nine inches or so that came down. It was the real heavy heat of everything, we had a lot of flooding.
And that wrecked a lot of stuff around here, so imagine what fifteen would do.
No, it's a, it's a great example. Well, it was a very difficult time, but it's a comparable example to help you understand.
What did the dam look like during that storm? Did you see it?
I was spending all my time with the waterfront, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, you're fighting the fires, the waters. Okay.
Fighting the tide.
So in order to provide this capacity and this increased capacity, which is not as immediate, there's really two ways we can do it. You can reinforce the dam in a way that you just let it all go over, and you open it out into what's called a single spillway configuration. You more or less just let the water wash over the dam. So this concept of having a small spillway to the one side and a large spillway to the other is out the window, and you just put a straight line across the top, make sure your edges are nice and tight, and let it go. So that's one way. And the second is to modify the configuration that you have now, where you aim it for a particular primary location, a service spillway, and then you expand the auxiliary spillway capacity. And the way that we see is most economical for you to expand capacity is to lift the top of the dam by a couple feet. So rather than try to dramatically lower the dam and remove large volumes of water permanently from storage as well, you'd be picking up at the edges, such that the water is not rushing around the edges of the dam, scouring away the part that anchors it to the hillside and the rock, and instead focusing it more toward the central, two-thirds of the structure, moving in that area.
Can the structure support-
Oh, go ahead.
Can the structure support having that much more concrete put on top of it, like the current dam?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is part of what we need-
So it's in pretty good shape then?
This is part of what we need to look at.
Oh, you have to determine that.
Well, and, and we did, and I do want to touch on that, it's just one-
Okay, sorry.
No, no, it's, it's fine. And you weren't here before, but please, any questions, just let's have a conversation about it, let's answer them as they come to mind.
Very good.
So right now where our, this spillway is, that, that's on, it's located on one end, extreme end. So as far as designs go, that wasn't a great design to start with because it should be more central from what you're saying?
Ordinarily, sure. In this particular instance, they did a great thing where they looked at that knob on the Segal property and said, there's a lot of rock right here, and it's in really good shape. And we did have our geologists take a look at that rock, and it's still in good shape. And ultimately, that will matter to dam safety as well. So where that service spillway is located is good because it's strong, and because it's actually in the end gonna make things cheaper for you because you can rely on that. And rather than building concrete to manage all the energy of that flowing water, we can use a lot of the rock that's there now to take some of that energy and then just build off that with additional spillway structure. So in your instance, spillway's exactly where it needs to be.
Maybe jumping ahead of it, but, but if we're increasing the height for our capacity, also are we looking at dredging, or is that not a possibility since this has, it's like man-made, so I'm, I'm assuming it's filled in over the rest?
We're not looking at dredging for additional storage.
And there's, is there a reason for that?
The volume of water that you're storing behind is, is a complex question, and it's one that, I don't, have you done a state field analysis?
No.
In any recent time? Okay. Generally, from a standpoint, it was done at one point in history and occasionally they're updated. You would update it if you were looking to modify how much water you were storing for your community. However, at the moment, you've got the reserve in upper, you've got what you carry in lower, and those are your two principal storage areas in the reservoirs. If you were to want to go through the expense of removing sediments, you know, dredging, improving storage, the first sign that you have there is you would be not meeting your water demands, or your water quality would be low just during the course of a typical usage year. Greg wouldn't be comfortable drawing down past a certain point because the turbidity would be going up, the plants would be overwhelmed, you know, there'd be a lot of factors weighing in on that, on that decision. So that process would look at what does the community need from its water supply? What kind of buffers are there against things like drought or other eventualities? Then looking numerically, what do you actually have in storage? You can measure it out, survey it pathometrically, find out your volumes, see if it's truly there, see if those two balance each other out. If they don't, something's amiss, maybe you would have to go dredging. In this particular instance, we are dealing, we're basically assuming that the water sits at the spillway crest, so plastic lake behind it, and everything from there is rainfall on top of that lake level. So the reservoir's full, and we're doing all the math from now. Never, in any point in these analyses, is the reservoir empty, where the volume would be eaten up, you know, filled up by the dead storage behind the spillway crest and then The spillway configurations we discussed briefly, the point of reference I just wanna note here is that you would look at this step concept for your auxiliary, for your service spillway and your auxiliary spillway, and the threshold is something that's roughly around a quote twenty-five-year storm. So you're basically seeing a really, you know, a small, a tropical storm type event, something like that is the boundary between what water goes from only using the service spillway to using a small amount of the auxiliary spillway at a higher elevation. So that's the kind of the, the state's guidance, and you've kind of got a check there for the delta between when you're seeing these extreme flows start to occur. So in here, we've got two scenarios that we put forward, and this is, we looked at a tremendous number of options. Change one variable, change another variable, change a height, change a depth, take some water off the lake, change a width, go with this single spillway, look with multiple spillways. But what we ultimately found, and through all these iterations, was there were two ways that were worth looking at. Both of them were service spillway with auxiliary spillway combination. But one of them we felt was appropriate to look at was whether the village should consider taking some depth off the top of the reservoir itself, basically eliminating some storage, because there might be a financial benefit to doing something like that. During the course of the, the process, Greg and Bart, your other consultant, did flag that the fine details of the agreement with New York City DEP for connection for supplemental water from the I N A may actually limit your ability to eliminate some of the upstream storage. However, if that were to come out as a recommended solution, it'd be something that would be looked at further. But to the point, we basically honed in on these two. One saying, can you afford to keep all your water? And one, is there a benefit to potentially eliminating some of that storage? So in both cases, the order of magnitude here, you know, we're talking about raising your dam about two feet for a spillway that would pass on this water, and we're talking about changing service spillway widths, either lowering a lake level and keeping a narrow service spillway, or maintaining a lake level and spreading that service spillway out. In either case, from a stability standpoint, we're reusing the mass of all that stone that's up there now and saying, that's good, we're gonna maintain that, we're not gonna take apart all that structure, there's a way we can use it, we don't have to go through all the troubles of removing that. We're just gonna work on top of that, and we can configure the structure in a way that it is stable with the extra height and the extra water flowing over the top of it. So we have gone through that math. Conceptually, it all works. The mathematics from a stability standpoint are fairly straightforward to complete at this point because they really don't matter on the nuts and bolts of any final design, and you can be comfortable that that stability is there. And you can be comfortable that that stability is there.
So in looking at SA one, if I look at the west side, which is the current service spillway, what you're saying is that will come down one point two feet?
In that configuration, yes, it would be.
And then the auxiliary spillway will go up point eight, and the dam top will go up two point five. What's the value of increasing the dam top?
Ultimately, we have to be able to pass this half of the end of the world storm. And that water level has risen behind this dam in the mathematical models.
By two point, two point five feet on the.
Essentially, yeah.
Can the lower storage withstand that level of water, or what has to be done down there to accommodate?
Ultimately, there is also work required at the lower dam. However, at this point, the village is doing the prudent thing, which is essentially starting at the top and working their way down.
But there is more required. The reason for doing this, or one of the reasons is because of this storm, and the lower dam can't accommodate this amount of water, then things have to be changed down there as well. Now, is that part of this plan that you're showing us, or is this would be determined later on?
Sure. The engineering assessments that were done several years back looked broadly at the system as a whole and said, there's improvements required for capacity at the upper. There's improvements for capacity required at the lower, and then there's improvements required down the boundary as well. So systematically, that was the time that the engineering assessment was done. And then the engineering assessment pointed out, you know, a to-do list of probably fifteen things or so at a broad level. And starting at the upper is the way to, is the way to proceed. In a perfect world, you'd be able to do everything all at once, but that requires a whole heck of a lot of money.
So your answer is essentially, no, this proposal does not address the lower dam at all?
I get it.
Okay.
Is that a danger, I guess what I'm getting at, since we're talking about end-of-the-world stuff? Is, so we accommodate this upper dam, and this extra water is coming over that wasn't before? And then is it gonna overwhelm the lower one? Is it putting, are we risking something by doing this? Or if the storm happened now and we haven't done anything, is the same thing, is it gonna be a worse situation?
Sure.
You understand what I mean?
I do. The water is gonna go, whatever rainfall happens tomorrow is going to hit the facilities in, for argument's sake, roughly the same way. Could it be, you know, two cubic feet per second different because of one configuration versus another? Yes, I think it is. Ultimately, during the permanent application process, we do have to go back and make sure that we're not creating any sort of exacerbated hazard on the lower. However, because of the nature of the way the dams are configured now, that doesn't really exist. If that large storm did hit, it would hit everything really without.
So it's gonna be bad.
Right, it's an extreme event.
Right.
And in the diagram on SA one, the tower is the low-level outlet tower, correct?
That's correct.
Is there two towers that are discussed in the report?
Just one.
There's a second one that's discussed as well.
Because you're talking about getting rid of one and putting in a second, I believe.
Yeah.
Getting rid of?
The existing one and constructing a new one.
Right, but aren't there two there now? Just the one.
There's one at each reservoir. There's one in the upper, there's one in the lower.
So the report that says it was full and you couldn't get in, and then the dam was lowered and you could get in?
That's the existing housing that goes down to the valve, to the lower.
So it's closest to the dam face itself? It's closer. Pardon me?
It's on the up.
Oh, yes, it's up there, yes.
That one is approximately fifteen, twenty feet out. The one at the lower, if you look at the lower dam, is only about eight feet out from the gap it's set up at. Where it would be. They both serve the same purpose.
Yep.
So on the rehabilitation slide, I'm just.
Can you, are you gonna go back to SA three?
Sure.
You're gonna go with that one?
Sure. So flipping to the, to the third solution. Here, the key at this point is we're keeping the reservoir at its existing levels.
What's that, sorry?
We're keeping your reservoir at its existing level. So, you know, if your reservoir has X million gallons today that contributes to your drinking water supply, the same million gallons is there in the future.
And SA one was adding from that?
It was removing the passage by removing one.
Okay, got it.
But SA three is a wider service spillway than.
That's correct.
Significantly wider.
Yes. Yep, adding about another sixty feet to the structure that's out there now. So if you can visualize what you see out there with the small spillway today, you're basically adding two more of those to the side. And if you were to sit in a boat and lower reservoir and then look back in the future after this was constructed, what you would see is an extension of new concrete that would push in that direction. And then after that eighty-five-foot width was complete, you would continue to see the rock face that's out there now. So for another sixty feet or so, concrete will cover over the stone.
And there's no issue, because we had asked at one point about the idea of encasing the stone, which has a basic organic ability to move and whatever, and you're saying there's no issue with doing that?
No, because what we're not doing, right, there was, the village had questions as to if we encapsulate this dam, you know, we're looking for trouble, and our point was, no, we don't want to create this envelope around all that stone and trap any water that does seep in between the stone and then, you know, destabilize, potentially destabilize the rock, you know, lubricate the stones between them. And we don't intend to do that. We would be covering one section of it, but there's plenty of air to the one side. You've got another two hundred-some-odd feet for things to move laterally through the structure and aggress into the.
So that kind of movement is occasioned by earthquake or what?
No, there is no, you know, the stone themselves are situated and placed and arranged really to make that structure of the dam now.
You spoke about lateral movement, and the question that I always thought I was asking was, what would cause lateral movement?
Forward, lateral conduction of water. You're gonna have groundwater into the stones themselves. It will have the ability to move laterally in the joints and cracks between the stones and then exit to lower reservoir down below. It's just flowing in the spaces between the stones.
So looking from the, I'm sorry, I understand totally. Looking from the lower dam, you're encapsulating some of that stone, is that right or not?
You're saying about eighty-five feet over from the left to.
Correct. In that, in that graphic, we are covering, we're building on the face concrete structure which will cover over the stone.
Right.
So.
Do we own that property?
Well, that's the dam.
It's the dam.
You own the dam property, yes.
Okay.
Above the upment.
The question that I had with that, this one, and is there, are you saying, the tectonic saying that, you know, you don't even have two in here, so one of your, are the most viable and three is preferable? Or have you gotten, are we getting, you know, an inkling from you as to which of the two?
These are the, these are the two that are, that at the end of the day are viable solutions, recommended solutions, one of which lets you keep your water, the other one asks you to give some away for those two. And the goal was to see whether that ultimately, you know, had a significant cost savings. I mean, just to cut to the chase, and again, it didn't appear to, but we can discuss that a little more.
The rock outcropping that's on the left-hand side of the west abutment is pretty significant as far as how it comes out.
Yes.
And, and so if we're bringing more water in toward that, isn't it kind of changing the direction of flow as opposed to coming straight over? And it's gonna kind of kick it back toward the center? You know, you don't.
You're right. It's, the way that the water flows down that face now is not uniform. If you think of perhaps a picture of, you know, some large water retention structure from out west, water tends to sheet in a very uniform way as it moves down and away from the dam. Here, it would be more of a whitewater as it rippled down and it moved back and forth. The reason that we looked at the stone itself and the quality of that rock was to find out if the rock was, you know, had a short-term risk for erosion, breaking up, chroming under those stress. It turned out to be a pretty robust material in that area. So yes, it'll introduce turbulence, yes, it will redirect as it's particularly on the most westerly end of that spillway. There's two things you can do during the course of final design. You can value engineer between, do we chip away a little rock to make it a bit more uniform? Or do we do a little bit more for erosion protection in the reservoir itself to reduce the amount of scouring that happens in that downstream section? That's a design detail that will be looked at, you know, when the time comes to do that.
So again, so the structure or the reason for encapsulating the one side, since it's all, right now, is one face and seems to be doing its job, why are we, again, encapsulating the one side with the eighty-five feet?
On the service spillway, it's gonna see discharge. If it rains an inch in the village, water will be going over it. That level of repeated flow across the open stone face would not be recommended. So you're going to put that concrete veneer on there to keep the water on the concrete surface and not entering back into the stone fragments and fissures from the face of the dam. You had that once upon a time on that section of the dam. If you were to go up there today, I'm sure that's going to find a lot of, it deteriorated. The dam itself today, when you're looking at it, has a poured concrete structure that's sitting on top of that pile of stone. So that concrete structure will be taken off. That's our recommendation there. That is, structure has passed its life, it's got a lot of failures within it. We would need to basically create a uniform structure that we can then utilize to raise the height of the crest of the dam on that, on the top of the dam. The other piece that is on the upstream face is to keep the, you know, we're talking about this stack of stones which comprises the dam, which is good, it's mass, it keeps it in one place. However, obviously, if it were just stones, water would pass from one side right to the other, and you'd never hold anything on your upstream end. What's keeping it there is a baked sheet of concrete from the upstream face today. And with the water level being down, we're able to see in some places it's in okay shape, in other places it's showing signs of deterioration, and other places it's already known to have deteriorated to the point where when the water level's high enough, the water will pass through your, pass through your structure. So that structure in itself needs to be supplemented. And we could go in there and haul the entire thing off, but that's kind of a unnecessary step. Instead, what we can do is kind of patch and smooth that upstream face, lay down membrane material, and then just weigh it down with concrete on the top of it. And that, together with the mass of the new concrete crest, provide the stability that we need for these extreme events to keep the dam standing as the water passes over.
And with life expectancy, the coating on the, on the section here, I'm assuming?
The membrane?
Right, so that, again, we're all looking at the fifty-year design target, that's what that is.
Thank God.
It's not something, right, you wouldn't wanna put a, right, a five-year membrane on it.
Right.
You know, skimp on that and do everything else.
And the rock face contact in the water, there's nothing on top of the membrane, the membrane is the contact.
The membrane is in contact with the concrete that you see in the pictures now, and it's covered by another layer of concrete to keep it insulated, so it wouldn't get punctured or damaged or cut by ice or what have you.
So you'd have to, it's not just something you can reel in and replace then? The membrane itself, you said something about fifty years, I don't know, you referring to the membrane or just this thing, this fifty years?
The goal for your investment at this facility is to have that meet at least fifty years. Fifty years is your typical design life.
So that membrane would go down past where the concrete is still considered solid?
Yeah, we would take it down to the upstream toe, so today, underneath the water, and it would drop down to the full twenty-foot depth.
Okay. So the concrete's pretty good down there, is that what you're saying? And then as it comes closer to the dam, it's deteriorated more?
As you, generally speaking, as you come more out of the water, yes, it's.
That's what it looks like up there, but.
A lot of that's freezing though, I mean, you've got, we ice working and all that, wrecked mountains, so I mean.
Just one point here, to maintain access for the water department, you know, you need to go up there. When water's flowing over the service spillway, you won't need to install a bridge at the top. And commonly with pump today is not what you have up there now. Instead, what you do is you just go out and get yourself a corrosion-resistant metal bridge cast and fabricated.
Build some dam in the tower.
And that would be from the west abutment to essentially the middle of the dam crest first. So you would be able to stand on that, it's a footbridge, not a vehicular bridge. You'd be able to stand there at that point and see the water passing the service spillway below you. To the tower, picture there. The reason that you have that tower there is it houses your, the intake. So the water, you know, some distance off the bottom of the reservoir, you have the inlet where the water will flow into a pipe and transfer to lower reservoir. There's also controls in there to basically turn on and off the flow of water as it transfers from upper to lower. The reason these things project back into the water body is so that they are away from the bottom of the reservoir, and that prevents you from dragging a lot of sediment laden water from one location to the other, keeps it running basically.
How long, how often or frequently do you play with these valves?
Right now, when we're up there, about every other week.
Really?
When it's not raining, you gotta move the water, you can only move it when it's not going over the dam. You gotta move it through the dam. The only way to do that is with the valves.
And so they're still working?
Yes. The lower reservoir, we replaced six years ago or so, this brand-new valve in the housing and the bridge is new and all of that. But the upper one is, the way it's out, plus we knew this project would be coming, we'd adjust it in this. It's not safe getting up there, but.
That's why you're, you do it not me.
If it alone, me alone.
So that, that structure, we did take a look at it. We feel that that structure is beyond its service life. Water department did ask us to take a good, hard look at what we really need to do up there. And really, our feeling is that if we keep it, we have to reinforce it to such an extent that it basically costs the same amount of money. That's why we've looked at it a bunch of different ways. We wanted to try and find some way of, of shaving down some of the costs of it. But it's just, it's a tired piece of concrete.
Your description of it in the report, I don't see how anyone would argue with taking that action.
I'm sorry, I've been arguing, and I still am, because, because it's the same structure that we have in the lower. And yes, it was taking on water, but it's not, it only gets water over time. In other words, it's seeping in there, and I can't understand why we can't lag into it, get rebar frame around it, and then single-face it and pour it, have a new structure around this one so that we're not spending a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to put a new one. That's, I still feel that way. And put a new valve inside it, and then you've got exactly what we've got at the lower, and it's, it's working well. So I don't, that's one thing that I do still have questions about.
And what I do, and I know, I know you wanna do that, and it still may be possible. The way that will, that will be solved really will be to, and if we're able to do it, and I'm sure, you know, design-wise, when the time comes, whether by diving it or taking additional water down to get good measurements as to what's. whether by diving it or taking additional water down to get good measurements as to what's down there. If we dive it, we can video it, we can measure it too, to find out what that is at the sediment level on there. We have still no, unfortunately, no one has the record drawings. We know that it's probably a lot like lower, but we don't know what it is.
Was this, the lower got like a tremendous footing under it or something?
Well, they will have, they will have substantial footings. If they are, if they are built in pretty much the same fashion as we suspect. And that really goes to a lot of the, what Craig is hoping for is that there's a robust bottom to this thing that we can utilize. So if we're able to document that and able to rely upon that, yes. The other option would be to ultimate bid a configuration where you go, okay, contractor will ultimately be able to have a dry reservoir, we could have this configuration. If everything works out, you have a situation here, you could follow it in this fashion. The backup plan would be something else. That would be doable. It doesn't help you from necessarily the budgeting standpoint, because you gotta plan for both a temporary, but, or the worst case. But it does allow you to come out ahead in the eventuality that things are found to be, to be suitable. So it's something that we can't sit today and recommend that you plan for. What we hope to do is solution is that we're recommending that you plan for what may become the required eventual.
And was this tower going further in toward the center of the reservoir or was it same location?
We would go as close to it as possible to eliminate any further.
Is there any kind of new techno, Greg says he goes out every other week or so to turn the valves. There's no kind of new technology that will allow him to open that up without having to go out there on a regular basis?
Uh, there is. You can activate and actuate those controls.
My side.
It is possible to do it?
We can't afford it.
But if.
I'm happy to turn the valves.
Right, I mean, it's one of those things, if, if the system, the way you're operating it now provides you the flexibility and you've got the ability to do it, why spend money on it? It, the reason that removing water from one location to another manually is just to maintain the delivery of water to the end user. It's not an emergency function, it's not an immediate function. It's something that is being watched, monitored and controlled. It's a couple hours to go out there and operate and then you're gonna have it pretty quick. So access, access, I think, has always been recognized by the village as being key up at this location. We did look through the documentation that you have for the easements that allow you to get in and around to the dam itself. We looked at the work that we're proposing that you do here at this location and how you might accomplish it. And then what kind of access do you need, both temporary and in the future, to maintain this dam and complete this construction? In the event that you have to go back and do additional work up there, be able to continue to get in there in an efficient fashion with appropriate vehicles. Right now, you're pretty much limited to a pickup truck. That's about the best you can do to, to either abutment. That is not going to be sufficient for the purpose of construction. So Faust Court, uh, you know, residential location up there. Right now, you've got a very meandering easement that kind of winds up and around through the woods to get to the top of the dam. You have no legal access to the toll of the dam across that property. So that's something that needs to be remedied as well. When you come from Lake Surprise side, Seagull property, there's an easement in place through half the distance gets you to the Seagull property and then you have a gap to get to the balance of the abutment. So.
Is that actually possible, even if you had access, to actually work from that side of? I mean, you can't get to the toe from there, or do you need both sides?
Well, and I'll, I'll get to that in a second because, because to do the work out there, it needs significant access. Right now, you have incomplete access just for Greg to go visit and, and monitor the dam. So that is something that needs to be upgraded. And obviously, that requires coordination of property owners. They have to understand what's happening, just what constitutes maintenance, what constitutes operations and then what constitutes construction. So, uh, one of the key things that will need to happen to facilitate this work is upper reservoirs will need to be emptied to get this done. So that means you're going to have one on top of your back to, in terms of your water storage, you're gonna have lower, lower only. And water gets to lower from upper. So what we wind up having to do is we wind up having to dam off both the upstream and downstream sides of the upper dam. It's still gonna rain, water will still get into the upper reservoir, it's gonna have to be moved, most likely by a siphon, through the work zone and move it down to lower. However, from a practical standpoint, the way this work moves forward is with a secondary water source, which my understanding you're working with EDP, been working with DEP and maybe working with DEP a little. But.
That should be a hundred years from now.
That will be a critical element to the water supply that allows it to go forward.
Is there any way to add additional storage to the lower reservoir during this period or in a temporary way or anything like that?
Not practically, no. To go to your early line of questioning, if you were reverse and work on lower first, you would only improve lower to the extent that you needed to from a dam safety perspective. And that too does not provide such a dramatic amount in increased potential storage that would be while doing that out of sequence. Well, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good perspective, but it, it just doesn't, it doesn't replace offer versus significant water body. So in terms of how the work would progress, we have the little slide with the yellow and red cranes on it and.
That's state of the art right there.
I tell ya, it's good. The, so the Faust Court side definitely is able to bring in barge equipment. It's definitely able to be graded and cleared. They're able to set up at that location. You can get concrete in there, we're going to need concrete at this location. The reason you need a good-sized crane is you just, you have no other way to get materials and supplies across the face of this dam. You have to set up at one of the, the abutments that you need to reach from there with a crane for just about everything you're gonna do except walk from one spot, from one spot to another. So that side, you know, can certainly be done. And it can be highly useful to work from that location as well. So it's a, clearly a candidate location for doing work. Coming from the Seagull property, very challenging. It's the top of a knob, quite literally someone's backyard.
This is, this is on the east side of the dam?
Seagull.
West side of the Seagull, yeah.
West side? Oh, I, yes, 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 yes.
East is on the top of the page.
I was assuming upper was on the right-hand side, lower's on the left.
Yeah, we keep changing this around every time.
The orientation helps you keep it the same way?
So the disruption on the, on the Seagull property or the, and the percentage that you would really occupy is significant. You really do have to stand there to kind of visualize it. And even imagining the, you know, a small highway-bound crane, you're thinking, wow, how am I gonna make this here? Probably take a couple retainables. It can be done there, but it will occupy that entire knob.
Now, if you come in from the west corner and don't go through that property, once the reservoir is drained, can you, is it too soft to move heavy equipment across there? Or can you, can you go from, I guess it's used as this property, it goes down and turn ends before it gets to Seagulls on that corner? Can you go in from there easily?
That's, easily?
Well.
Easily, no, can it be done? Yes, and we did explore that and taking that option as well. Essentially, what you'd be doing is you would be setting up a crane in the former reservoir and working from the upstream side.
So that's the red crane?
That's the red crane in the picture, yes. And what we did find is that it is actually possible to do all the work from that particular location. However, the negative to that is you can't do anything very quickly in that regard because a lot of what would be happening on the downstream side would be completely blind. So if you can just imagine, the crane operator would have a spotter, you'd be on the other side telling them, yeah, a little bit to the left, a little bit to the right, a little bit to the left. It would be a, a slow way to accomplish work.
Well, how do you get materials in? I mean, once you've got the crane set up, I, I understand. But I would imagine you're gonna be bringing in concrete truck after concrete truck after concrete truck. So would they come in either on Lake Surprise Road for the west crane and Faust Court or to get the right, with the right crane?
So you're right, there's materials that have to come in. There will be a decent amount of concrete. You know, attempting to make your own concrete on site doesn't really solve anything. You have to bring in all the raw materials, it's the same problem.
Right.
So, uh, what, whichever configuration is ultimately selected, yes, wherever the crane has to get to, the materials come the same way, get to that location in the same fashion. Whether we did everything from one location, or we did it from two or even three, that were, you know, to be recommended. Someone, either a human, a worker or a material would need to get to that particular location and access would have to be improved. The point that I would just want to highlight with, if we were to go only with working in the drained reservoir, that does not solve the problem and does not eliminate the need to improve access just for maintenance and operation of the dam. Those still all need to happen. And, you know, not only does it slow things down, but it makes it difficult to get the materials in there as well, congest them.
So we had a project going on last year here where we, it was a state federally funded project. So we had to follow federal guidelines for offloading concrete. And if I remember correct, was it thirty minutes or sixty minutes? Sixty minutes from when the concrete truck left the facility to when all the concrete was offloaded. We, that we struggled to do that and in fact failed a couple of times. I can't imagine that, that this will have the same problems if you have to follow the sixty-minute rule.
Concrete quality, uh, you know, it's, you're, you're basically looking to manage and you try not to overheat the material. So that way, it basically winds up being.
This was, this was, the feds sent the trucks back.
Yep, yep.
It wasn't a question of the quality of the concrete.
You know, that's what they're.
Sorry.
Yep, that's what they're striving to, striving to avoid. And you're right, I mean, it's.
Do you have to follow that? Would we have to follow that for this project?
You're gonna want quality material going into your dam. You know, you obviously, if you buy something, you want it to be good. You want that to be your end product. And yes, what the inspector was doing in that particular instance was, you know, following a particular instance. And whether they were checking the temperature of it or not, nobody knows. They just looked at their clock, perhaps, and said, you're out of here. So be it, but in fact, you still want. It doesn't get away from the material to leave the plant, get to your job site, be discharged rapidly. That's gonna get you ultimately what you need at your location. So you need to design the access to facilitate that.
Or you mix the materials on site.
Or you could do that, but then you're just hauling all the materials in, that's the.
Yeah, but you're, you're not up against the time wanting to get the materials to the, to the site.
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, the, the Faust Court, we, we, the, I can see the black line, which I guess is the road, or no? Yeah, is that, that's the access road that we have, the two black lines above Faust Court Drive itself?
Yeah, that, the.
Or is that, or close to, or is Faust Court, do we have an easement?
You do, you have an easement from Foundry Pond Road.
Yeah.
The easement starts over Faust Court itself to the benefit of the village. And it wanders up and around. And actually, you can see where Casey hooked the, the yellow arrow here.
Right.
Essentially, your easement does something similar to that where heads up off the page and then wanders back down. You know, heading straight down the page toward the, toward the yellow crane.
So on the Faust Court side, we, it, we, it's not a property issue, basically. If we have to improve the road or whatever, it's an easement we can improve on. Whereas if we're going through Seagulls, we don't necessarily.
There's nothing on Seagull.
Right.
And on Faust, Greg can drive his pickup today. You cannot get a crane.
Right, but if we have an easement, we would have the ability without getting into a whole property dispute about improving. Whereas on the Seagull side, we're gonna have to create an easement or make an agreement.
But the report talks about having to go across a patio and, and other retaining wall that, that there are in the eas, in a path of the easement that there will have to be. If one exercises that easement with heavy equipment, one would destroy some of the property that is owned along Faust Court. And so the cost of, once, once the project was completed, the retaining wall would have to be reinstalled, a new retaining wall would have to be installed and a patio would have to be rebuilt.
Do you know what she's referring to there?
Yes, that's all correct. I mean, in, in both cases, whether it's Faust or Seagull, there would be restoration costs that would have to come back. You know, you, you'd be expected to leave the project as you found it, once the work.
So our easement road on Faust isn't direct? It's not actually a road right now that's going through retaining walls and patios?
The, the patios and the improvements are on the Seagull side where there is no easement.
Right.
And then on the Faust side, there would be damages, you know, to driveway by heavy equipment and things like that. But there is a clear path that you can drive a truck today that is legally dedicated to the village on the Faust side.
Well, if we have a two-pronged approach, it seems like would be the way to go. You would go with Faust and you'd have, you could deal with that. And then Seagulls, we could go, not go through the property. If we were, if we were able to come from the Faust Court side, then that would kind of eliminate the blind work that you're talking about.
Right, and ultimately, we, we recommend and recommend that you budget for working from Faust and from the drained reservoir.
Right, right, okay, that's what I was getting at. So we wouldn't have to go and do any repairs to Seagull property or anything like that.
There, I mean, I think you, from a practical standpoint, you'd like to be having a temporary easement to, you know, walk workers back and forth across that, but not tear it up and, uh, try to situate it with an application.
The one thing that I saw as you were talking about on the Faust side was, is that you're not following the path of where we're going in now because of the terms and, and, you know, but that you're looking to actually bridge down between the Castellaro and Faust. And there was some area where there was, you know, an amount of fill that was going to be raised out of the bed because the terrain falls off to level things out to get that road to go in, in a more manageable way with the large vehicles, trucks and cranes and whatnot.
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the large vehicles would need an alignment that more or less follows the, the driveway that leads to, to, is it Castellaro's last home, if I remember correctly? Uh, so if you kind of visualize their driveway today, it kind of arcs a little bit to the west where the easement wanders more to the east. So you would, you'd follow that driveway location, but you'd rework the elevations to a compatible point where they essentially aim for the, the far abutment. And then you'd have to grade out that area in the woods.
It's just that the biggest issue that I see with that is that we're going to build it and then take it back away. And then we still will have our little access that we have now. But we'll be paying to install and then, you know, get rid of an access road. So if we stayed on the, on the Faust side of it where the terrain is still relatively level, it just seems like when we have to go down and follow that driveway, all the fill that's coming in there is always going back out. So we're, we're gonna, gonna pay twice for the same thing and not get anything in the end out of it. Because that will not be the path in the future. It's going to be, you know, it's, it's gonna be constantly redone in order to, you're not gonna leave that grade the way it is for what we need for them, they're not gonna want that. And so that fifty years from now, whenever we need to do a big project again, we're gonna be building it again. Whereas if we find a way in that's, doesn't involve all that terrain change addition that becomes permanent, or maybe it doesn't. Whereas if we find a way in that's, doesn't involve all that terrain change and addition that becomes permanent, or maybe it doesn't look permanent like a road that it gets skated in or whatever to keep everybody happy afterwards, but it seems like, you know, the turn coming onto the old road that gets to the dam is, I think, where the problem's gonna be. But it, it leaves us with something in the end that we don't have to take back out again. And I think the, the option seems like we're gonna, we'll be taking it out.
Not necessarily. So, when the time comes to have those conversations, uh, we can certainly look at what the, what it looks like. Because I think the, the goal would be to have the access that you're describing, which is, let's leave something behind that is great favorable, uh, but still, but not objectionable, uh, objectionable visually to the residents up in that area. Uh, such that you're not going to, as Greg said, scoop out a side of a hillside and then put it all back and then say, great, now I've just made myself another headache for fifty years. That wouldn't be the goal. Uh, it's still a, a process with the, uh, the owners in around that area, the game that, uh, the, the clarification between a temporary easement, a construction easement, a maintenance easement, uh, what could be done, how could be worked out. Look, I mean, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to show what that is to the people in the area and understand what it could look like, how it would be managed. Maybe it's objectionable, maybe it's not, uh, but it's, it's back and forth, you know, it's, uh, it's a dialogue.
And I think the reason why we talked about basically not having everyone down here right now is because we kind of have to decide what the project is going to be.
Yeah.
Right, before we evolve, you're, now these are the properties and the people we're gonna need to talk to and whatnot. So that was pretty much the feeling, you know, right? Not keeping anybody in the dark, we just don't know where we're at yet.
No, yeah, right, and, and it's going to take, it's gonna take examples and clarifications and, you know, some exhibits and some options. Permits will be required jointly. The principle one is gonna be dam safety, they take the longest, they, uh, look at it the hardest. Uh, because you're basically, uh, using these reservoirs for drink water supplies, the water levels already fluctuate. So from the habitat side of things, they don't tend to, uh, uh, look at it as critically because it just isn't a static water body that's always at X level. It's, uh, falls in the communities that, uh, tend to occupy those fringes, uh, don't tend to develop, uh, as well, uh, in water supplies. Uh, there will be ultimately some consultation, uh, with Phillips Town, uh, to the extent that they wish to, uh, have input and regulate on the project with respect to, uh, fringed wetlands, uh, and, uh, potentially tree removals and that's work on that side. Uh, you know, it's a, to the point the time is ready and the plans are sufficiently detailed, uh, that can be, uh, met with and, uh.
Should seeker be on that list?
Seeker is part of it as well. Uh, you have the ability to, uh, be lead, you would not in all likelihood be contested by anyone. Uh, DEZ sides, they tend to allow dam owners and in the case of the municipalities to process their own, uh, seeker, uh, for that. Uh, you know, you've really done your homework at this point, you've done the right thing up until this point, so, uh, seeker is, uh, um, pretty, the boundaries are pretty well understood, uh, as to, uh, what is out there, uh, in and around the, you know, the footprint of the project. Uh, and then the Army Corps side of it, uh, it's all what they term a nationwide permit, which is basically, it means they're, they're general type permits. Things that they understand the risks and they have the, uh, the parameters pretty well established for, uh, that piece of it. It's not generally, uh, uh, driving any of the, uh, ultimate, uh, outcome of permit conditions. So the cost, uh, we had broken out, uh, a number of lineups for ease of estimating and ultimately thinking we would be able to plug and play a bit, a bit more, uh, with the combinations. Uh, but as we highlighted the two, uh, at the end of the day, there were really only two points that, uh, mattered much in the outcome. And the two spillway options there, uh, were, uh, either, uh, lowering the spillway, taking some water off the back, which was I say one, uh, or, uh, maintaining your, uh, lake levels, uh, and, uh, putting a bit more structure to it. Uh, at the end of the day, it's in round numbers, a four hundred thousand dollar difference. So, what we have generally found that communities consider is that, you know, if you try to put a price tag on that available storage that you have there, it usually means something for the future. Uh, that flexibility, that ability to that water storage, the value of that water, uh, and what it means to the community in terms of, uh, supplemental supply or future growth, uh, is very, very difficult to put a price on. Uh, but here, uh, it appears to have the value, uh, approaching a hundred thousand dollars. I was, we were thinking when we set out at the onset here that there would be a much greater delta and a much, uh, more convincing argument for the village to consider, uh, that one foot, uh, of storage being, uh, uh, potentially lost in that reservoir. We would look at it here, we didn't make that recommendation.
What's the difference between configuration one, two, and three? I see the dollar difference. What, what picture, what page shows me the, um, the different, what is configuration one, configuration two, configuration three?
For the, uh, uh, for access?
Yes, yes.
Sure. Uh, access, configure, there is no picture, uh, in the, uh, in the handout for it. But, uh, the access configuration one, uh, was, uh, to set a crane on, uh, Seagull and set a crane on Faust side.
Okay.
Configuration two was to set a crane on the Faust side and set a crane in the drained reservoir. And configuration three was to sit in the floor of the reservoir.
Single crane.
That would be added labor, you thought, because of the poor visibility?
It's, it's risk, it, it's, it's delay, it takes much more time, uh, to work from one location. Uh, it really doesn't do anything for the access aspects, uh, from either abutment. Uh, so you still are left with all the existing access scenarios that you have now. Uh, and it introduces an element of risk that is very difficult to, uh, to put a number on. Uh, however, when you increase your time that you're out there, weather can turn against you, or delays, uh, delay claims, et cetera. Things, uh, become inherently riskier.
And these alternate access configurations are only construction costs, they don't figure out what it's gonna cost for us to get our ducts in the road.
Acquisition costs are not in here, that's correct.
Not even estimated, so no way, like, you know, making any, you have nothing wrong.
We, we, we did not put that in.
So, following up on Greg's, uh, just my next question is what isn't included here that we have to, uh, take account for? As far as legal costs?
Acquisition.
That's it?
That's, that's what we did not, we don't have, you know, it's, it's a dialogue, it's a process, it's something that, you know, will gel uh, as you have those conversations. Uh, they do have, you know, real estate appraisal costs, they have legal costs associated with them. There are, the restoration costs, basically put things back the way they are or clean them up after we are done, are in here.
Okay.
Those were estimated into those access configurations of the purchase property.
With the raising of the dam crest, okay, uh, as you come up two feet, that we're talking about? That's gonna toe out farther than the rapids on both ends, that's not really discussed how far out that's gonna be. So where are we gonna, you know, because again, that's gonna be into the Seagull property and that's gonna be over to the, the other side.
Correct.
I mean, how far do we anticipate that's gonna carry by gaining that elevation?
Sure. Uh, on the Seagull side, it's steeper, uh, and it toes in more quickly. Uh, but you're right, it still, uh, goes further. At the moment, it does look like, uh, it would retain, it would remain on the, uh, village property, uh, at that location. On the, uh, on the east side, pull up that survey real fast. Uh, because the ground is shallower, as we raise the two and a half feet, we're gonna run further, uh, into the woods on the edge. And the corner of that property out there was in question. Uh, and that was one of the items in the future, uh, that quar- that quadrant will need to be better understood from a property ownership standpoint because it's a little vague, uh, right now, there's a lot of play between the evidence, uh, that's out in the field. I don't need to be tied down with additional boundary survey information to better understand that and know for sure whether you are extending structure onto your property or approaching someone else's, and which point you need to, uh, clarify the ownership reasoning extent. I have a copy of some large fold-out sheet, but here, that's it. Uh, this would be good enough.
So is there a potential timeline?
I think it starts when you have a better understanding of where you are with the, the, uh, where a reservoir is.
That wasn't, uh, really, uh, we'd say every, every permit is going to be available by frame. All access easements have been worked out.
Okay.
So it's a bill. It's dissembled, when can it start? And once it starts, how long does it take?
Construction is approximately eight months. That's a, for a, a project of this scale, a project of this type, that's a very, uh, reasonable and appropriate duration for active construction.
And with that, you're including the construction of the access to that, including the whole thing start to finish.
And can it be done in any month of the year, or must it always, must it be from end of winter to the beginning of winter?
There are seasonal restrictions associated, uh, with clearing. Uh, so you have those scenarios where they want late fall, winter months, you know, for clearing the trees. So there could always be phasing elements, depending on where you actually were aiming for and what you were actually faced with. Uh, however, that plays into, uh, the planning for it. Uh, there's also, uh, the need in all likelihood here, uh, for rattlesnake monitoring during the course of construction.
Do not want to be the rattlesnake monitor.
How's all of them?
Please take one.
Is that you, Greg?
No, 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 you were on, you were.
That is a person, correct?
It is, it is a person.
It's not a, it's a.
Uh, however, it is something that, because the windows are so restrictive for rattlesnakes, there's, there's just no way to work around it.
No, no, I, and you've seen.
You know, only you're gonna do it for the baton, you can't do it for the snake, but then you can't do anything, so, okay. So you gotta, you gotta pick one or the other, and you can work with the clearing, you can monitor for the rattlesnake. And that basically means you can work when it's practical, uh, to work.
Okay.
Here, you can conceivably do it whenever. This is a dam that is limited to, uh, a construction of concrete, really. So you're not gonna want to do it in the dead of winter because getting concrete to cure in those conditions is difficult, requires a lot of temporary measures. So you would like to be able to do this in spring, summer, fall weather. You can work on the shoulders of it, uh, whether it's for any earthwork type dams, earthen dams where you're mounting up soil. That's much more weather sensitive, the windows are smaller for that.
So, uh, we're talking about private roads, some private roads, I'm assuming Faust Court, and so they are not necessarily plowed, I'm thinking in wintertime?
I'm sure they plow, they'll go by hill.
They, and they're le- at, whenever they need it plowed, they, they plow, right, okay. Big surprise, plowed all the time?
Yeah.
Do you ever go up there in winter, Greg?
Yeah.
To the upper dam, how do you get up there?
The truck.
It's driving through snow.
I lived in Seagull's house for twenty-eight years, I'm pretty familiar with the dam. Uh, you could, theoretically, you could start the construction in the early phases of things in the wintertime, you wouldn't be, you're doing your concrete work, but you could be removing the cap, you could be doing, you know, lowering levels and everything else, that could be started. And, and that would actually, that type of thing helps us out because as we're, you know, could be buying water from DEP, you know, we're using less water in the wintertime, so it, the more, more that we can crop into the times of the year that we're not using as much water, the more it can save us on that end of it. It's not gonna be, in the scheme of things, it's gonna be one of the lowest costs of this project, but it's still something that, uh, we should consider when we're scheduling.
Good point.
Uh, and while we're waiting on DEP, we also have to be thinking about the wind arrangements and all the legal. So I mean, we're gonna have another couple of years before we're gonna have DEP done, and in that time, we pick our design, our access, and then, you know, work with the legal department.
Design and permits, you know, uh, uh, one year is a good number for the two together. You know, if you were ready to go, uh, you know, tomorrow, uh, you know, it, it would be, you know, like a, a, a three-month, uh, window to get you to design level for application process, the application process, working with dam safety. For better or for worse, a, a high hazard dam tends to get more attention when those documents come through. Uh, so you do, you get a more thorough review for that type of facility, however, you also get a lot faster. Uh, just for example, I have a low hazard dam, uh, out near Ithaca where I, I can't beg them to review the document, it, it's just so far down the badass scenario. Uh, you know, uh, so that process, you know, another six months, generally would have winds up taking to manage all the interplay of those permits. And then on the backside, the construction documents going through your public bid process. Uh, with dams, just, I mean, that's a way out in the future, but we don't recommend anything less than one month period for, uh, procurement, uh, when it's loaded out to the contractors, give them ample time, these things are complex. Uh, the contractors out there, specialty contractors that do this, uh, you want somebody to have a good look at it, a good understanding, you want somebody that's qualified to do the work.
Now, are design fees included in this, or is that?
There are allocations in there, uh, basically.
Does that mean? Does that mean it's covered or not?
Yes, no, it, it is, and what, and what we use when we estimate these are FEMA cost curves, uh, for them. Uh, it's basically an ASE ba- uh, based, uh, percentage based on the cost of construction. And then the intent in there is to cover things like surveys, like permits, like, um, uh, construction documents, bid documents, you know, design and extra computation analysis, that sort. Uh, so the soft costs are in there. Uh, these costs are today's dollars. Uh, they have to continue to be escalated and put into plans, you know, to project out in the future. Uh, if it's something that isn't happening tomorrow, you know, the cost of money does increase over time, so that always has to be accounted for as well.
And the RFPs, do you do those, or who's responsible for them when we put it out the bid?
Uh, engineers typically put together the packages that have not just, not only the technical side of things, but also the permit side of things. So, you know, requiring all standard documentation, uh, you know, state require documentation going there as well. Basically following the way that the village typically likes to procure, construction contracts, uh, our firm and any other, you know, tends to follow that feed. Uh, if you have the set of documents you like, you know, firms tend to defer to those, if you don't have ones you like, you're fine.
So you do the, all the RFPs? Um, if we, obviously, we don't have three point X mil sitting on our budget today. Um, how long does it take to get together the money, assuming that we're going to bond this? Until we, until we have the, like, until we hand over a check and say, okay, let's go now? What does that, what does that amount of time?
Right, we don't wanna buy the money too early, right, don't wanna borrow too early, ban it out too early, and then be sitting on it.
Right, right. Exactly.
We would, we, in order to tighten up that timeframe is.
Well, design permitting, I mean, could some of the money come out of the budget of water and sewer to, to pay for that, so you don't?
That's what we've been trying to do, you know, with a lot of it, is just keep as much of it within the budget so that you're not really utilizing the bin until you're getting to the big chunk of money that you're going to use. Uh, and the question on that is, you know, what happens, we've got this, this is the overview, this is the broad sweep, and what's, what's the next? What are the next phases getting us to construction documents?
Sure, I think the two things that can happen in parallel at this point is, uh, dialogue with the adjacent, uh, folks that are around the abutments of the dam, so you get a sense of how we're gonna be able to truly get at. I can, I can sit here and I can say, I think this is a really good way to plan for it, uh, but if somebody wants to do something else and that we have to cross over their property, then maybe things need to change. Uh, but that, I think. Uh, but that, I think, should, uh, at the same time, uh, you need to keep in touch with dam safety, uh, on this dam. They know that this needs to advance. Uh, we recommend that the village allow us to submit these documents to the state to say, here's what we're thinking at, here's, we're making good progress, this is the direction we want to proceed. There are items out here that need to be addressed, that are triggers that allow us to go to those next steps. But in the meantime, let's, let's take a look at, uh, at what you've got here preliminarily, uh, and take their feedback as well. Uh, we've had conversations, uh, during the course of the generation, this report, uh, with Pete up in dam safety, Pete Calroy. Um, so he's aware of what's going on, uh, on this point. You know, they'll always welcome the opportunity to, uh, uh, provide more formal feedback. Uh, but it's good to keep them in the loop with what their activities are, and as you, uh, you take the plans there.
And this doesn't lock into anything, it just gives them the general idea of we're moving forward.
Doesn't lock into.
You know, we're, we're trying to keep on the path, and, you know, we're not locked into this specific, it's gonna change, it's gonna, depending on what we have with our surrounding.
It's, he, you can't build it based on this information, you can't issue a permit based on this information, but it does narrow things down to the point where they understand, okay, this is a, this is a serious effort at this point. This is a, a serious look at what is practical, uh, here, and what might not be, and it's a roadmap.
It's, it, it, we've expended, I, I like the idea, it demonstrates we've invested a significant amount of money in getting to this point. We're not gonna just abandon it now, but, uh, so I, I think it, it reinforces that we are serious and we're making progress.
It seems like the bottom line is we have to repair these dams, right? I mean, I would think, uh, so, i- is there a way, is there a way, and does it make sense to ban, um, to break this into the, the road work that needs to be done and get that going and, and, and finish that? Like, well, I guess we'd have to decide on which way we wanna go first, but, you know, while we're working on, you know, working with DEP and working on all these other, whatever other permits or whatever's taking a year, can we get road work started? Does that make sense to get that in place and to do that section and ban for the road, and, you know, access roads?
Yeah, I, I, you could consider.
Does that save you time and then you're ready to go?
Well, there, there's a couple ways, because to have a meaningful dialogue, uh, with the adjoiners, you're going to need options that they can see and understand. Uh, and there are, you know, design aspects that would have to be worked out. The, for example, the Phillips Town is gonna wanna know how many trees are gonna be cleared. Uh, right now, I can, we have a box, we, I think we have an allowance for one acre. You know, something along that, or the magnitude, we'll, we'll wear, you know, well, it's in the corner here, a little better than that. Uh, and to know that, the answers, uh, as to how to access and grade the roads to get in there for the various equipment need to be figured out and to be tied off, and then we know specifically what trees would, you know, be in that, uh, that location. That level of preliminary design could be done and could focus really at the perimeters, so that you have the tools to work with your owners and, and secure the easements that you need, uh, on the edges. And it will take time and not, you know, as much money as it's all spread out at the same time, and it's, and it's manageable, uh, in that regard. Uh, whereas doing the complete design tomorrow and then putting it on the back burner, to me, doesn't seem, uh, like the best approach. You know, kind of, I, 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 I think I would tend to agree that where you're coming from is let's, let's work at, nibble at the edges, get that established, help you work through those long lead items, uh, which are those, uh, those property and, uh, and access matters. Uh, and then when you're ready and secure and you have a good sense of what the timeframe is, when you could go to construction, then take it to the next level for the permits, secure those permits, you're going to get them. You know, the, the windows, that's, that's better understood. Uh, and is there a time where if you needed to say, okay, three hundred and sixty-five days, and I wanna be, uh, having the bonding come back, having money available, have a contractor ready to go and be able to spend, start spending that at that point, I mean, yeah, that's, that's more predictable.
Okay, so the next step is we, or what, what's a decision we have to make and, and to go to the next step?
I'd recommend opening dialogue with the, uh, the owners.
With the property owners.
We have to have some options to show them. So, who's gonna, are you gonna to help us prepare some options to show, or?
What we've, uh, what we've done with other, uh, with other dam owners, uh, is we've had, you know, basic conversations uh, with the level of sketches and descriptions that you have in front of you now, uh, for it to basically open it up, explain, answer questions. You know, what is it you wanna know, how do you wanna, just dialogue, what, what concerns you? You know, what are the topics, what are the, uh, the elements that, that are in your, uh, thinking?
I think we're gonna need something a little more visual, that you're gonna be sitting down with some of you and talking about how you wanna get there. I think we have to have something a little more, you know, conceptual that says, you know, this is what's here now, and this would take this along this path and then sketch in what, what that difference is going to be, not just a topographic, because nobody's gonna look at that and understand what it is. They're gonna need to be able to, you know, see what that, that is going to change their property for, you know, whether they're going to even consider it or not. You know, there's no sense in, you know, getting to a point of like, hey, oh, lucky idea helped me out, we're, we're gonna make this work, and then, oh, wait, no, not gonna happen. You know, right?
So, the, the piece that, the piece that is not shown, that what you're describing now, would be, you know, the conceptual limit of clearing, uh, across that property as a result of the grading. So, what we've got, that's something that we could add, uh, to what we have on the graphics that are contained in the report. Uh, so we just like to say, okay, you can stand out in the yard and say, that would come to here.
Right, put some stakes with flags on them or something.
Walk right through it and say, this is what you're looking at on the paper, and let's walk through the yard and, and, and see where it is.
I just think that's gonna take us into a, a better understanding, oh, because we know, you know, I mean, it's gonna matter more to them, it's their property, so, I mean, just kind of describe it without really getting to that visual point, because.
How do we work on the Seagull side, where if we come and then beer up to the, uh, the west corner, there's the stream that feeds there? And so you have to come into the property more to get into the reservoir? So, you have to actually probably go into their property a little bit?
I think we're, I think we're like that storage turn loss, where, yeah, where that turn loss, that's still, I believe, Eustis property.
Yeah, it is.
So, if you're coming in that far, and this is, of course, you know, if he's amenable to it, is that we get to that point and then turn out toward the reservoir. What would stop, uh, I mean, if we own the reservoir and we own the waterline, right? What would stop us from getting, you know, if we wanted to fill in and shore up a road that gets right to the west abutment there, um, newly in our reservoir, if you will, kind of creating a road that gets us right to that point for, for setting a crane? It would be kind of equivalent to setting it twenty feet away, which is on the top of the patio. Is that something that could?
That's essentially what we are considering in here, however, we're not doing it at the waterline, so to speak.
Okay, right.
Because of the severity of the topo, it's just so darn steep as the, as it dives into the water in that area, that you'd be talking about moving a lot of material inside the, uh, the water body, so we're trying to.
It's gonna help them have that access to get us to the dam at that side as well.
Right, we'd be, we'd be working with the s- the slope and the, and the bottom of the reservoir and moving that by, you know, cutting a little, filling a little cribbing, uh, to get down across that face.
So, I guess if you're doing some, some visuals for us, maybe where that, where we would tie that into the show of Seagull Land Eustis, where that.
Yeah, that would, yes, that would be part of it.
Okay.
We've got that.
But we have to cross over the stream, or would it be on the Seagull side of the stream?
We, we stayed, uh, to the south of where we believe the, uh, the intent is to stay to the south of where that stream, uh, wanders into the.
But if you had to temporarily bridge over it, you, you could, could as well, okay.
Worst-case scenario, what do we do if these two property owners say, just dig in their heels and say no? That's it.
Have you had to do that before in any of your experience?
Uh, on highway projects, I have not on a dam.
How does that go by your experience in the lengthy process, with lots of years of attorneys and stuff?
I think if we go, I don't think, I think we can get there. You know, I don't think, I don't, I didn't wanna use those other words, I just, I mean, go on with optimism, I don't think we go, you know, I don't want it written anywhere. I mean, it's, it's like, we're not saying that it's gonna be a fight, we're, we're hoping that everyone's gonna be happy on all sides of this thing, so.
But it is a, it's not a short, it's not a short process.
No, I mean, it's a procedural process, it's one that, uh, you know, it's set in law and, and it's due process on both sides. Everybody has, uh, has the opportunity.
Now, on the Seagull property, or the huge, you know, the entry up of, uh, Lake Surprise Road, coming down, is work gonna have to be done on that, can you make the turn in a radius or whatever for a crane?
Correct, there's, there's incidental work, uh, throughout, just to make sure that machinery and equipment, uh, can move, uh, and make those maneuvers, uh, in there. It's, it's estimated in the bodies associated with each access option, you've looked at places where you would have sticking points. Uh, and just like the restoration of driving equipment, you know, concrete trucks back and forth, up and down the, uh, Eustis and, uh, and Seagull driveways, I mean, it, it gets backed up, we're gonna come back and regrade them and reston them.
Right.
We're gonna need a meeting with Greg and Bart to grab an inclusion.
Okay, so like, like Maru was just saying, we, we'll meet with you and Bart, um, and kind of go over your thoughts on everything, and, um, and then work with the coordinator, coordinate, who, who do you want to coordinate with the, uh, property owner? That's from our end, if we, when will we have some visuals for them and work, do you wanna meet with them also, or how do we proceed with the landowners?
Commonly, uh, the owner of the village in this case is the lead on that dialogue.
Right.
The, the community has the relationship, uh, I'm sorry, the, the landowners have the relationship with the community. You know, they recognize it's your reservoir, your facility. Uh, we are there, uh, to support you in any way that you wish. Uh, we're more than willing to come to these meetings and provide the technical explanations, the graphics, the, the situational awareness. You know, this is the location on the property, this is what we're looking at, the interpretation that's needed, uh, the exhibits, what have you. Uh, ultimately, uh, land surveyors, uh, that we have, uh, will need to tie in and provide exhibits that are the, form the basis of the legal documents involved to descriptions, that describe the land and location and the extent of the space that's required across there. And we can provide those as well, um, and we can obviously provide the, the legal side of it, but the village has representation, legal, that can help you, uh, with those processes.
You, you received copies of the easements from the, uh, office?
Yes, we have, we got the village records.
So, somebody knows where they are?
Yes, yes, they've been mapped, they've been surveyed. Uh, so the, the overall mapping that was done as part of this project, uh, shows what you have and, uh, shows what you don't have, and then the report describes the, uh, the, the house.
Is the access road clear enough for property owners to see what we have now that we would be working on?
Uh, the road itself was around it, I mean, the, the kind of path that we take through the Faust property at the end of Faust Court is, we just, we feel a way around the trees and hit stuff, so it's not really delineated that someone would see exactly where it is.
So, that's something we should go up and kind of flag out?
Flag out, probably put flags in, to, you know, in order to be able to see that. But I mean, also the, you know, kind of the pathway that, or the potential ins, I think also kind of need to be in reality flagged out in a way that, you know, people would, you know, those property owners would be able to see what we're talking about. You know, in addition to the, the, the random will tell them what the grades are gonna be and what it should look like, but the flagging would tell us, okay, well, it's, it's right here, and they're thinking, oh, I thought it was going over here, that type of thing, so, I think that's gonna be.
So, first thing before we freak them totally out and start putting flags up this top.
Yeah, we're gonna have power stations, we can.
Okay. So, you wanna meet with the board and, uh, and the board?
Tonight or some other time?
Not tonight.
Because Bart's, oh, not tonight.
No, not tonight. Yeah, no.
A way to leave.
I have some things and, uh.
Should we, uh, write a letter to these property owners first, just telling them what's happening, because they're not aware of it, and then go from there? Like that, the clerk write it up or something?
I think at the point where you're looking to get them down here to, like, sit down and talk, you can preface it by saying, uh, we've got a project coming up that's gonna be sizable and it's gonna be in your backyard.
Yeah.
Can we get together and talk about, you know, ways to make it, that good for all of us, or, you know, um?
Would that be a letter, or you mean just go knock on their?
No, I mean, I think that, that's probably a good idea to get that out as a letter, you know?
But you don't do that until you know when you're gonna be sitting down, or have an idea where to sit down with them.
Early, I, I mean, if, even if you broach it and, and, and discount it to the point where you're saying, you know, we're gonna be looking to get together with you in the next, in the coming weeks, or, you know, you, you have to have it nailed down to a date, I don't think you do.
I'm, I'm fine with coming weeks, but that, that would say to me, by the first week in January, you'll be sitting down with me.
Okay.
And I'd like us to have.
In the first two months of the year.
Right, that sounds good.
Earlier than the year.
This winter.
Depending on the stuff, I, I mean, you know, it can be what, it can be whatever you want, I mean, it should be kind of a soft opening to say, this is, this is where we are, and this is, you know, we've got this project, you've heard maybe or not heard at all about it, or have now read it in the paper and don't know that we're talking about your property, so.
We're gonna see it on YouTube.
Uh, possibly, so, you know, again, just to try to allay the, the panic and the, uh, you know, people getting their backs up by saying, you haven't even talked to us yet. Let's get that letter out, maybe even in the next week.
All right, I can, I'll work on the letter, and we'll get that out, I'll put a specific date on it, and we'll just be kind of a introduction to the project, say we're going to, uh, you know, need to work together on this and whatever. Send them a gift basket.
Send us some pecans, with the cashiers, send us some cashiers, if you see, if you see we have the cashiers.
Yeah, I gotta get in there before they disappear.
Okay, then do we know what, that we would Bart think at some point after that practice, that just?
Bart, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and you, is, is this your co- is, are you?
No, no, I'm with the Hudson Hens, I entrust.
And, and, sorry, you're from the village, or no?
Yeah, I just, the Hudson Hens, I entrust, or just kinda, I was asked to come on by and just listen, I'm not reporting it, don't worry, I'm not putting it in the paper. We know that.
Probably had it on Wednesday, you got a week, you got a week to do that, you got a week to get our letter out.
Motion to.
Yeah, do that.